The GA program is cut, as has been posed by the department.
Absolutely not. There is no question. We are doing all that we can. We're already at capacity. We're beyond capacity. We're relying on the generosity of donors. But there is no way, absolutely no way, that any nonprofits in the Portland area for sure can handle an additional thousand or fifteen hundred homeless people tomorrow. Absolutely not.
Elizabeth Bean?
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Bean. I'm the program coordinator for immigrant support for Hope Act. Alan is my boss. These folks standing with me represent some of those testimonies that I just turned in, people who don't have the courage to speak aloud, and from some folks who weren't able to be here today. So you'll have those with you as well. Other folks have addressed lots of needs of asylum seekers and lots of benefits that we have because they're blessing us with their presence. I would like for a minute to talk about the right of asylum. The right of asylum, sometimes called political asylum in Greek, is an ancient judicial concept under which a person persecuted by their own country may be protected by another sovereign authority, a foreign country, or church sanctuaries, like was really common in the Middle Ages. This right has its roots in a longstanding Western tradition, although it was already recognized by the Egyptians, the Greeks, and the Hebrews. The principle was later adopted by the established Christian church. The United States is a signatory to the Hague Convention which outlines the responsibilities of member nations to asylum seekers. Most of us in this room are aware of the negligence, in fact, that has been spoken to earlier, the negligence of our United States government in providing and not providing for asylum seekers once they seek refuge on our shores. This calls for concerted and coordinated action on all of our parts to challenge the US government and to get it to live up to its responsibilities to people who are fleeing their homelands for their lives. At the same time, the fact that the US government is not upholding its duty is not an adequate reason for us to not uphold ours. We in the Judeo-Christian and Muslim tradition have a moral obligation to protect and care for those who are in need of assistance, whether they are native Mainers or new. We are specifically called by the Second Amendment to apply it to asylum seekers. The alien living with you must be treated as one of your native born. Love him and her as yourself. For you were aliens in Egypt. I am the Lord your God. Again, we are called to address these issues with the federal government while we are caring for our neighbors here. Thank you for your consideration, and I urge you to not make any of these cuts in general assistance or the other programs.
Thank you, Liz Bean. And before you leave the podium, I would like to invite those who are with you to introduce themselves to the committee and to let us know where you're from originally.
My name is Alontre Nguu. I'm from Burundi.
From Burundi. Welcome.
My name is Wuzisa Koud. I'm from Burundi.
My name is Pilitu Sapizena. I'm from Burundi.
My name is Dairo Rottig. I'm from Ghana.
My name, Gabrielle Mubah. I'm from Ghana.
My name, Jean Jacques Mubah. I'm from Ghana.
My name is Marina Nahimana. I'm from Burundi.
My name is Thomas Bakula. I'm from Congo, Brazil.
My name is Bismara Fesissiba. I'm from Burundi.
My name is Shami Mewa. I'm from Burundi.
Well, welcome to all of you. We're glad that you came to be with us today. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next person on the list is Arman Tundan Yungu. And you give me a clap.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Alontre Nguu, and I'm speaking in opposition to general assistance to asylum seekers. I am an asylum seeker, and I have been in this country for one year and ten months. General assistance has been absolutely a pleasure for me to be able to live while I waited for, to be allowed a work permit from the federal government. Now I have my work authorization to work. I left my home country, Burundi, in Central Africa after suffering. In Burundi, I studied marketing and accounting. After completing my studies, I opened a small studio, photographic and video studio, to cover wedding ceremonies and other events. I also worked in nonprofit association. This association was actually church ministry in which I was responsible for youth department. My job was to bring together young people of the church in small, little building projects, carrots, cabbage, onion, tomatoes, and others. I also had the task of seeking funding for livestock, breeding goats, chickens, and rabbits. I also had the mission of organizing evangelical choirs. Because of my position working with young people, I was asked to work for the political party in government. They reached that I drink youth on the behalf. I choose and the problem starts. That is why I'm now here in the United States of America. With aid of New Men's Resource Center, at Portland Elementary Education, I got a certificate at SMCC South Portland in computer repairing and another training. I got a certificate about hospitality. I have got my permission to work. Now I'm in search of work. I now have my work. Last week, I did an interview to work in press photo. I hope that I will be accepted. And today when I arrive here, they called me for another interview. So I can begin to be a part of the society. While I'm waiting to get a job, I do my work at computer lab at Portland Education, helping other immigrants to learn English by using Internet and software programs. I am the resident advisor at Hope House. Hope House is a housing organization for immigrants in Portland. I am responsible for day-to-day operations of thirteen persons in the building and the development of outreach programs. I also did work there at Shelter on Oxford Street, cleaning public spaces. I have been volunteer helping provide meals for the homeless through wayside soup kitchen at Hope Gateway United Methodist Church. GA is essential for now. GA is essential for now, but I look forward to having a job and being able to give back to the state of Maine which has helped me so much. I'm glad to be in Maine where I have found the people to be friendly and helpful. I can say Hope Gateway United Methodist Church and the Backside Neighborhood Association. It is at last possible for me to build a new life. It would not have been possible without the aid provided by GA. Please continue to make GA and other benefits available to those of us in need of temporary help so that we can start a new life and become contributing part of Maine life. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. Good luck with that job. Stacy? Harmon?
Par.
Excuse me.
That's my scribble. I apologize. Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Stacy Parter. I'm the president of the Maine Welfare Directors Association. I do the general assistance for the town of Rockport. I am here today to provide testimony in opposition to Part KKK of Governor LePage's proposed fiscal year 2016-2017 general fund budget. One of our main concerns, as it is with all towns and cities in the state of Maine, is how legislation can affect the property taxpayers. We need to ensure that folks get the assistance needed while keeping the taxpayers in mind. We oppose Part KKK as it puts an unfair burden on the municipalities that effectively administer the general assistance program and punishes them for doing so. We feel if adequate audits and administration of the program, the existing funding formula is fair and equitable. We support Part CZ and Part DDD just as long as the legislation includes that they can also not receive general assistance benefits. The towns and cities cannot take on another burden like we did on the Tan of Sixteen. We are a last resort program, and the continual burdens placing us by not including general assistance in the wording is unfair and unjust. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Asunta? I'm not picturing your name. I'm not even trying to try the last name. Start with a J, anyway.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Asunta. I come from Burundi. I live in a beautiful country in the heart of Africa, but unfortunately, a country that has first war parties. I even almost expect a resolution from people for the election of May fifteenth. I came here in December twenty-fifteenth, thirteen, and then moved with all year visa from Burundi. I came with my husband. Like I've been going pretty well in some ways. I gave a lot of experience in financial and social sciences. It was a hard decision I took living in my country. Everything I got about my family, my house, and my work, a good career in NGO, fifteen years of service in a program of child protection. Minor in Kaiser, minor under eighteen in Kaiser, mother in Glades in Kaiser. I had no choice. It was between that and the... Two things I got out, many did not make it. I came because I thought I would be in safety. I'm back in my country, and I am, thanks to you. I also thought I could easily get a job, especially with my experience with United Nations agencies. Surprise, no, without help for me. I kept to wait six months while I had four abilities, intellectual, more. I was going to have to be cared for in wishes like someone disabled. Yes, I am not so attractive. For currently, left in black, food pantry, I work for children for two, doing classes on finance and management. He is stressed, often think. I have to do something to keep my rest so I don't need to be taken care of. During the new proposal of the part to cut the GA, all my hopes for I am destroyed, and I have a secret to lose. How am I going to live without anything else? How can I get food? Let's see. I cannot in any case go back in my country following the current program. Perhaps killing, corruption, no fair justice, no access to medical care, discrimination in distribution of medication. Many factors are considered which don't allow me to go back. I'm raising my voice on behalf of all beneficiaries of general assistance support, held compassion and guilty to these children whose war was. He is considerate, his father, who's due. Don't keep the law and now the wrong effort to assist them. You are father, mother, grandma. A child deserves another chance. Don't send these children and family who has dressed your hands while feeling massacres. Don't break the future of young students without food or shelter. There is no safety for them, for us, in our own country. We ask for help, assist to walk. Those who can, those who can, and for those who cannot, that will be allowed to receive GA during the long period of waiting for the recovery. There is no safety where immigrants cannot walk. We have a lot to treasure, exchange of experience, behaviors. You need our contribution as you need, we need you. All for a new man. Thank you very much for your speak.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Burundi, who want this file?
No.
Sorry.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Munais Maham from Djibouti, a country in East Africa. I speak very language French, Somali, Arabic, and English now, trying to learn. I'm single mom with three children. One of home has special needs, dance syndrome. I live in the western Maine since June 2011. I now work at the United Somali Women of Queen as a domestic violence advocate since January 2014. In 2011, I arrived in the United States having in hand my associate degree in international business, diploma in French. I went back to school in 2012 to learn English and receive my GA in November 2013 from Lewiston Adult Education. I left my country to be because I was a victim of trade and persecution, rooted pluralism and discrimination because of my race. I belong to an ethnic group which is a minority group discriminated in my home country. I left my country because I feared for the safety of my children and myself. The decision to flee was a very hard decision to make. I had to leave my husband, my family, and I don't know if I will see them again. I came to this great nation seeking asylum, which means getting protection and shelter. I believe and still believe here in the United States of America I will be treated like human being who has full right and dignity. Today, I'm able to support myself and my children, but when I arrive in Lewiston, I receive general assistance which help me and my children feel safe and comfort for the suffering of our past. General assistance, tenebre, and food settlement benefit provide important support to family. They provide basic necessities which are the basic human rights. They are source of hope. They are sign of support and assistive care. And they are also sign of solidarity when some members of our community are left behind. I believe in these benefits. If these benefits are interrupted, many mothers and children will be left homeless and starving. I don't even want to imagine what the future looks like for asylum seeker without access to those benefits. I'm very happy to live in Maine and raise my children here. I know that they will be grown up here, go to school, get a child, and be Miners who give back to their community. They will also be one of the help to determine the future of our state life. Today, on behalf of myself and my children and all other New Menors, I urge you to reject cap to essential program that help people to get on their feet. Thank you for understanding.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Questions? Ayesha? Wait. How bad was that?
Good afternoon. My name is Aisha Ithwais. I live in Lewiston, Africa.
And my name is Kate Brennan. I live in Green, and I work for Manual Justice Partners. And Ayesha has asked me to share her testimony with you today. So these are her words. "I am here today to speak in opposition to the elimination of the general assistance program for immigrants seeking asylum. I am from Djibouti, and I lived in the capital city there. I was happy, well-paid. I had no financial problems. But I fled my country because of fear of persecution related to freedom of expression. I worked in the Ministry of Interior, which was the one in charge of elections and counting election results. The party in power was defeated in an election, but they stole the election to remain in power. I knew the real result from my work, and some of us spoke out about the truth. And that caused the whole collapse of my life. I had to flee my country to avoid being thrown in jail or killed. My family is still in Djibouti. The hardest part was leaving my mother behind. When I was on my way to the United States, I knew that I was going to a free country, and I would find hospitality there. I arrived in the United States October tenth, 2014, in Lewiston, Maine. I was welcomed, as I imagined I would be, with warmth and support. I was able to access support from the general assistance program which helped me with rent, food, and electricity. I am so grateful for this support. I don't have TV or Internet, and I keep my costs low, only using a refrigerator, stove, and the lights in my apartment. There is no extra. I get a place to sleep and food to eat. I rely on the food pantry to meet my other nutritional needs each week. I am now a student at Lewiston Adult Education, and I am a proud volunteer while I wait for my work permit. Since arriving, I have felt safe being here and far away from the trauma and pressure I experienced in my home country. It's been a long process, a long recovery process from the trauma and stress of my past. But the proposal before you today confuses me. I came to the United States, and I was welcomed with open doors. I don't understand why some would let us die without support. Please choose to stop this inhumane proposal from becoming law. Thank you very much for listening to my story today."
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Jack Comar?
Good afternoon. My name is Jack Comar. Senator Cates, Representative Kettine, and members of the committee. Here today, a little change of pace, to speak in opposition to the proposed changes to the main care disability process. This is the proposal to extend the time that the state has to make disability decisions over forty-five days to ninety days. So Maine has had, in effect, since the 1970s, a law that requires Maine Care to make disability decisions within forty-five days. Maine has also had a federal court consent decree that requires decisions to be made in forty-five days. It also requires that when the state is unable to make the decision in forty-five days through no fault of the applicant, that they issue a temporary Maine Care card. So over the years, Maine has done fairly well complying with the forty-five day rule. I think that last year, there were maybe a hundred cases that went over the forty-five days of people who were then granted temporary Maine Care. And that temporary Maine Care only extends until the state does make the decision. So the proposal before you would extend the forty-five days to ninety days. And I noticed in the commissioner's, what she submitted to you, it said that this is required by the ACA. It's not required by the ACA. The ACA allows states to go up to ninety days, so states can be anywhere along that. But Maine has always done it within forty-five days. The other thing that this proposal does is it says that if you change it to ninety days, and then Maine Care does not make a decision within ninety days, there will not be a temporary card issued. So there's no consequence to the state for not processing the application in a timely manner. So I think you have to think about, you know, is it important to give the state another six weeks to determine whether or not a person is disabled? And during that six weeks, that person goes without care. So I think it's important to think about the statute here and that we have been able to comply, for the most part, with the forty-five day rule. And if we change this now, it'll become ninety days is the norm. So what was forty-five days will be ninety days. And then, when they exceed ninety days, there's no consequence. Finally, the state will have to go back to federal court and try to get relief for this consent judgment. So I'm not sure how that will go. So it's speculative whether this can be achieved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, forgot to get that one.
Thank you. Representative Sanders, a question?
Thank you, Senator Cates. So, Jack, remind me, did we do this because it saved a lot of money? To change it to forty-five days to determine disability?
We added some additional staff a few years ago to do it within forty-five days, and that did save a lot of money. That made us pay it out, yes.
So will this move then cost us more?
It could, if you wanted to make timely decisions.
And then you alluded to the court, and that was one of the questions I was wondering about when the commissioner was presenting is, you know, what are our chances for overturning this rule?
Not good.
Not good?
Well, I mean, we would be opposing the state overturning the consent decree. So I don't say not good, but, you know, I don't know how it'll go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Single other question. Thank you. Joey Clayton?
Good afternoon. I'm here actually to submit testimony for Buckie Pollinger. She regrets that she's not able to make it here today. She asked me to present her testimony. So thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. She and her husband are Portland residents, and they are host parents for an unaccompanied minor. She also had a long career as a child advocate and child welfare specialist. Now, in her own words, she states, "The issue of GA specifically and benefits generally has become deeply personal to me and my family. I am compelled to write to you today by the vast amount of misinformation you may be hearing about people who are being helped by GA. Three years ago, a young woman was sent by her parents to live with a distant relative for self-seeking asylum for herself and her three young children. The compound where they lived was bombed. And as the rebels in Burundi began spreading the terror that was growing throughout the country, she and one of her four brothers were seriously hurt. But they could only afford to get one child out of the country into safety. So they chose the only girl, believing she was at greater risk of harm when the rebels returned. At seventeen, she was sent by her parents with the help of relief organizations to live with a relative on a student visa. This was due to increasing terrorists. The bombing that had occurred happened right after this remarkable young woman had graduated ahead of her peers from high school in Burundi. Her plan had been to become a public health doctor. Her dreams were dashed after the bombing, and her family had to make the heart-wrenching decision to send her to safety. They believed their relative would care for her and make sure she pursued her education. Now, her student did all the house cleaning, childcare, cooking, and of course, went to school every day, leaving the house at 6:30 AM and going home right after school. She never missed a day of school. She progressed from English language learners to general studies to honors classes in the first year she was here. Meanwhile, it was getting difficult for her to care for this family, maintain a high academic standard, and take care of herself. A series of consequences led us to hear about her and her need for a safe place until she graduated from high school. We knew very quickly that she was to become part of our family. We worked to get her permanent status. Just after her eighteenth birthday, she was awarded a green card, a work permit, and the ability to work hard, become self-sufficient- the ability to work hard, become self-sufficient, and quote, "give back." She has gotten a scholarship to Wheat College, and she is pursuing her goal of becoming a doctor, and she may possibly come back to Maine. She considers Maine her home. She never received GA or any other benefits, but she is in the minority. She was able to benefit from the generosity of a community who understands that it is not just the government who has called to assure safety to the most vulnerable. I implore you, think about the history in this country, the immigrants and refugees who have come before. Most tragically, think of the last seventy years of having to make demands to the Jews who were refused entry to this country and returned back to the Nazis. Listen both to the stories told by the relatives whose families were sent back to be slaughtered, and to the stories of those who were helped by strangers they did not know. We cannot repeat the mistakes that we know compromised us as human beings. For every family, child, person who is getting GA, there is a future worker, employee, business owner, and professional. See this as an opportunity to invest in Maine. The community cannot support the donations for food, clothing, and shelter needs for all New Mainers. I cannot imagine how we will cope with seeing people literally put on the streets. I implore you to consider that day, and where you will stand if that occurs. As a Mainer, a parent of three grown children, a host parent to a young woman doing everything everyone has asked to become a productive citizen, and as a privileged white middle-class taxpayer, I ask you to not balance the budget on the backs of the most vulnerable, lowest-income residents, among them, those who have fled unspeakable terror. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Robin Merrill. Particularly for those of you who don't struggle with English language, you've got a long way to go, so I'm gonna, lines up and mess up. Let you know with three minutes to please summarize, because people are waiting a long time. Thank you.
Good, good afternoon, esteemed committee members. My name is Robin Merrill. I work for Mainful Justice Partners, and I'm speaking today in opposition to part ZZ and part DDD of the proposed annual budget that would bar many immigrant groups here in Maine access to our safety net. Elimination of the state-funded TANF program and food supplement program, and SSI program for lawfully present groups, including asylum seekers and legal permanent residents, are not in proposals. Back in nineteen ninety-six, when Congress barred access to these programs for lawfully present groups, Maine, along with many other states, opted to continue eligibility for these residents using state funds. With strong bipartisan support, Maine chose not to discriminate against these new Maine residents. Since taking office, the governor has sought to undo that decision. The 2012-2013 annual budget originally contained these proposals, as well as a proposal to deny health insurance through the Maine Care program to the same groups of immigrants. These lawfully present groups lost their Maine Care as a result, but the legislature chose to maintain income support through the state-funded SSI program for elderly and disabled individuals who rely on it, often as their only source of income. In a more recent supplemental budget, the legislature elected again to preserve this critical lifeline a second time, the SSI program. As part of the 2012-13 budget, the legislature did opt to make cuts to the state-funded TANF and food supplement benefit programs, but provided for hardship extensions to the general bar that accounted for extraordinarily difficult obstacles like disability, old age, domestic violence, and waiting for work authorization. A hardship exception was carved out for asylum seekers while they're waiting for work authorization, because as you've heard, they have to wait a hundred and eighty days to work. Over the last two years, this committee has twice voted to extend the hardship exception so asylum seekers could access these benefits until they become employed instead of losing help the day they get work authorization. And since then, the funding for this extension has run out. Now individuals, you know, again lose help the day they get their work authorization. Legislature extended these benefits because this temporary assistance allows individuals to stabilize their lives and move along a path toward employment. Now we are here again having the same conversation about cutting off help, except the stakes are much higher now. Now the administration is also seeking to deprive these groups of general assistance, GA, which provides these families with shelter, food, medicine. The majority of people who would be impacted by this proposal, as you've heard, are asylum seekers, and general assistance enables them to pick up their pieces and make a new life here. So eliminating GA for these thousands of people will have, as you've heard, many serious consequences, going without medicine that's needed, shelter. Charity and kindness, as you've heard, cannot meet the need that would result if this passes. And as you know, a lawsuit is currently pending that will resolve whether the administration should have followed Maine's APA and gone through rulemaking in order to make these significant changes to eligibility with respect to GA. After failing to make this change through rulemaking, because the attorney general found that it violated the law, the administration then went on to advise municipalities to do it nonetheless, even though it violates state law. The plaintiffs in this case have a strong case, but regardless of the outcome, the issue is now before you, and the question of whether to temporarily help people get their feet on the ground is yours to make. And I just want to stress the fact that the administration, you know, they've made the claim that we're required to cut off help because federal law requires that, section sixteen-twenty-one of Title VIII. That's simply not true. Section sixteen-twenty-one provides that states must affirmatively provide that, quote-unquote, "non-qualified immigrants are eligible for aid in order to assist them." Asylum seekers and other lawfully present groups are not considered to be qualified under the federal law that qualifies non-citizens for federal benefit programs. The general assistance statute provides that all Maine residents have the right to apply, but there is no express provision regarding citizenship. There is an argument to be made, however, that our law already affirmatively provides for their eligibility. As you know, two years ago, the legislature overhauled the GA program, making significant changes, including a change that was made to the definition of eligible person. In any case, you now have the opportunity to end any dispute as to whether or not these families can receive help. By acting affirmatively now, you can choose to continue this critical support for asylum seekers and other recent immigrants. And I know my time is up. I just want to make the point that, that there is work being done, that the federal government certainly does have responsibility here. There's work being done to encourage the federal government to take that responsibility. In the meantime, the reality is that asylum seekers have settled here, and we have the collective responsibility for their well-being.